All right, welcome everyone. This is a special board meeting, committee of the whole meeting of the Board of Education. First item on the agenda is we have a welcome from Ames' principal, Mr. Gierman.
Good evening, District 96 Board of Education Superintendent Ryan Toy. Welcome to Ames. We're happy to have you here this evening. I wanted to say thank you for the green space that we have next door. We started using it a couple of months ago and kids are out there playing. They're using it during lunch recess. They're using it during any kind of break or physical activity time that teachers feel kids need to get out there. Worked with the PTA. We did a fundraiser. We got a nice Gaga ball pit out there. It is portable, so when we do decide to do something else with the space, we can move that and kids are using that as well. And we want to use it as outdoor learning as well. So we're working, I'm working with my Ames leadership team here and we're going to be purchasing planters for each of the grade levels and we're going to integrate some science and some outdoor learning spaces for the spring. And each grade level has a planter. They're going to decide what they want to plant. They're going to take care of it. Hopefully, they will harvest what we grow shortly before we get out for school and who knows, maybe we'll be able to make some kind of salad or who knows what we'll do. So getting kids out there and really using it. And the parents, thank you as well. I'm hearing very positive things when I meet with the Ames PTA regarding we finally get some space for our kids to move around, which is good. Also, I want to invite you on Monday, this coming Monday, to Chipotle over here on Surmac Road. We're having a student council fundraiser and the kids love this, so they're raising money. They want to buy one of those big beaded like rugs where you come in, you know, they're the plastic beads and it has the Ames and "Welcome to Ames Elementary School, Ames Dolphins." So they're saving up to purchase that for our school and there's going to be teachers there, students there, serving burritos and taking your food to your table. So kids love it. And the kids, I've developed a budget for our students and student council as well, so the money they raise, they have to come to me and we talk about how we're going to spend it. So really a great program we're running with that as well. And that's about it. We're getting ready for the holidays, getting ready for our holiday show on the 18th and looking forward to winter break coming up and then we'll hit the ground running to carry us on to the rest of the school year. Thank you very much.
Next item is public comment. Is there any public comment? If there's no public comment, then does any board member have any changes, proposed changes to the agenda? If not, then we move right into the committee meetings. First committee is Sheri, education.
We have a heavy socialities discussion, so we're going to take a kind of a different topic today, which I think is kind of appreciated, which is digital citizenship. And we have our tech people here to talk to us, so thanks for coming, guys.
Good evening. I think, I think they can probably hear okay. Good evening. Glad we have the opportunity to present this evening, digital citizenship and student safety in District 96. I will have some assistants with me, so we'll go through the, I guess it helps turn this on, go through some introductions. I'm Don Tofano, Director of Technology and Innovation.
Jason Smith, Instructional Technology Coordinator.
And Kelly King, Instructional Technology Specialist. We're really excited to be doing this presentation this week because this week is Computer Science Education Week. We invited all of our staff to participate with the Hour of Code with our students. So I've been pushing into a few classrooms and getting kids excited just to do a little snapshot of coding this week, so this presentation really falls at an appropriate time to just get kids a little bit more excited into the computer science field.
Some of the key topics that we're going to cover tonight is SIPA, which is the Children's Internet Protection Act. We're going to go over some student safety and self-harm prevention that we're doing in District 96. Jason and Kelly are going to talk about the digital citizenship curriculum and then also some of the progress monitoring surrounding that and then a little bit on crisis planning. So the first thing, SIPA, the Children's Internet Protection Act, which was enacted in 2000 just to address concerns regarding safe access to the internet or any harmful content within. And it also imposes some E-Rate eligibility requirements on schools. Schools and libraries that participate in E-Rate program must comply with SIPA and you must have an internet safety policy. We have as our administrative procedure, which was attached, the acceptable use of electronics, electronic networks admin procedure. We also have to implement, oh, also with that, that's also integrated within our online registration. So when parents register online, that's when they have access to that information as well and accept it. As far as for content filtering, we also need to have content filtering. We use a couple of different methodologies on premise and then also for the one, within the one-to-one program when students are away from, away from school. And one of the other requirements is that periodically, we have to talk about it at an open meeting and that is what we're doing right now. So it's also a checkbox for compliance. Student safety and self-harm prevention, really being proactive on making sure that students are safe. With the Securly content filtering program, we've implemented what is their disturbing keyword alerts. So what happens is if students are searching about any content, it flags keywords and we get an email notification. What that allows us to do is identify the student, notify administration. We also have the ability within that platform to run utilization reports, so we can determine was it a false positive or was it an actually identified issue? And we've already, in the weeks that we've implemented it, we've already identified at-risk students and so it's already come in, come in handy. Also, from a security compliance and also safety solution, which integrates level of self-harm as well, we're in the discovery and evaluation phase of different types of services that what they do is they, they take a look and scan our different web platforms, the productivity platforms. So it would go beyond student searches, would also include our students potentially creating documents or writing in something, they're writing about something that could also be flagged as self-harm. Where it also, the scanning process also would protect us as a school district would be if for some reason it identifies, would identify if social security numbers are being stored or sent via email. Also, if any credit card information is being stored, if there's any hate speech, IEP data. So it actively scans and again, like the Securly product, would generate a notification and then we could then follow up on it. And if there's any external sharing of information, it would identify that. So if it were with any user outside of the District 96 domain, we'd be identified. Also looking to get parents more involved with this as well. Securly has developed a parent portal and application to go along with it to actually parents could also via mobile app also monitor and be alerted on their, any content that again could be identified as self-harm. Also, it allows some custom restrictions at home if you wanted to block certain sites when they're outside of school. Also looking to develop a parent workshop that would allow us to roll this out, allow parents to come in that wanted to, needed more of a hands-on approach to it. At the same time, we do, we have gotten questions about, well, how can we protect our kids at home when they're not on a district device? You know, what, what do you, what do we recommend, although we're not big on recommend, what are some options in terms of home safety and home protection for internet content filtering? And then also share with them some free online, online resources that would provide some safety tips for, for at home. We're also looking at really revamping our bullying reporting tool so that we can provide some better, well, it's our bullying notification, anonymous notification, want to be able to provide really more data back to the district administration and the school board as far as how many we get in, how many are actually actual, I have been identified as actual bullying incidents. We get a high percentage that are just false reports. You know, with any online tool, kids will hop on potentially and submit something that is, you know, non-relevant. But then oftentimes, students will report incidents that aren't technically bullying, but there's still incidents that could, should be referred to a social worker and should be investigated.
We've also started taking a look at using Raptor. Martha, Don and myself have been working with Raptor for our volunteer screening process. So looking at different levels of screening, Raptor would allow us to do more of a background check. And there's different, there's two levels with it. There'd be more of like the sex offender background check if you've ever gone to RB High School and scanned your driver's license. Or there's more of an involved kind of online application. So if parents are willing to volunteer at school, they can jump online, fill out the application and then that background check will be run through the Raptor program. So we're soon rolling that out. We've been kind of taking a look at the different hardware issues and then the different type of, you know, scanner that we possibly need and then wording on our application. So that's coming soon as well. So digital citizenship curriculum is something that Kelly and I worked on quite a bit last year to kind of revamp and change. We chatted about this with you last year as well and how we used to have it where it would be, just a lot of choices and then teachers used to just kind of pick and choose from that list. And there wasn't really much consistency in terms of a common language or what activities were run and so kids were duplicating the same activity if they moved from, let's say, third grade to fourth grade. And so we started really looking at how can we improve our digital citizenship curriculum? And the family on Online Safety Institute in 2015 said 78% of parents believe that technology has a positive, use has a positive effect on their child's future career and life skills. And so that's a good percentage of parents saying, yep, technology's a good thing, but they also reported that parents believe that teachers should be teaching digital safety, but over 80% of teachers don't believe they have the tools to teach these skills. So that's where Kelly and I really looked at that percentage and really looked at that information and said, how can we help? How can we provide some guidance in teaching digital citizenship? And we talked about this before, I don't, we don't use the word internet safety. We, you know, value digital citizenship, just how can we have citizens online? How can we have our students make wise decisions? Because most of our students are just always on the internet or that's what they've grown up using. So we want them to make smart decisions. We want them to be good citizens online, just as we're explaining that we want them to be good citizens offline. So we're still using Google, Google's Be Internet Awesome curriculum. This is our second year using that curriculum or that program. Google collaborated with three different organizations. They collaborated with the Family Online Safety Institute. They collaborated with KidNOC Safety and then also iKeep Safe. So they took experts in the field of digital citizenship and then came together to develop this program.
So these are pillars for Google's Be Internet Awesome. So and it's things we would want kids to be online and offline, so that's what's on the screen now. So for kids being smart, alert, strong, kind and brave. And Jason and I really work hard to make the connection between being those five things online and offline, because those are things I think we would want all of our kids to be at all times, whether they're using technology or not. And so those are kind of the pillars we have stuck with and the kids get a consistent message kindergarten through eighth grade, which is also great.
So what we provide is that we, we think about that 80% of teachers who don't feel that they're equipped or ready or comfortable to teach digital citizenship. So what we do is we provide a website, kind of that informational hub that teachers can go to. Kelly and I make a video and then on that video, we have a topic that we're discussing. We provide discussion questions. We put a timer up on there, so we'll say turn and talk to your neighbor for a minute. We took some feedback from junior high students. They said a minute was too long, so we've cut that back down to about 30 seconds. So turn and talk and then basically it's kind of a press play for our teachers. But with it, we always include additional online resources. We include additional activities. So we kind of just share the initial information and then we are reinforcing those topics with those additional activities that the, the teachers can do with students within the class or, you know, in other opportunities.
We took some feedback last year after we did this for one year and we got, I won't read this to you, but we got really positive feedback across the board, just that teachers feeling like this is a really important topic, the kids having good feedback, good discussions, and then it lending itself to further conversations in the classroom.
So with anything year two, how can we tweak? How can we change besides the timer going from 60 seconds to 30 seconds? We also talked to, I said in a couple of parent leadership or the parent group that Martha meets with, and a lot of the parents mentioned that they would like to have those resources available to them as well. So Kelly and I have been going online, finding additional resources that fit our curriculum, but then also using common sense media and then using a couple of other resources out there that we can then start sharing with parents. I have shared in the past through a principal communication, here are some tips, but this year our plan is that we will post and email our own communication out and provide these resources for parents. And then also we're incorporating student voice. Kind of felt like maybe Kelly and I on the videos was a bit much, so we recruited some of our innovative student leaders to be the voice for our elementary age students. And so our elementary ages students can now look up to some of the junior high students and hear that message being said. I would love to get some eighth graders to share their voice as well. Don't feel like a sixth grader or seventh grader, they weren't, they weren't comfortable sharing that to an eighth grade audience. So there are some eighth grade students that I'm going to be recruiting that they can help create those videos as well. And then we're just continuing to encourage teachers to discuss digital citizenship in class. So looking at their curriculum, looking at any opportunity they can to start sharing some information about whether it's comments or what information they post or just in general, how we can improve our digital citizenship. And so with it, we looked at our progress. So when we did our Bright Byte survey, we saw that this was an area that we were lacking in. So 14% of students said that digital citizenship was discussed on a monthly basis. So we took that to heart and realized that was it maybe the framework that was before where it was kind of pick and choose or was there something that we were just disconnected and missing? There's some school districts that kind of just do a one lesson and then they call it good for the year and we felt like that wasn't enough. In today's society, in today's world, that we wanted to continue to provide some examples about how we can provide support in a curriculum to our students.
And we get, we send out a survey once teachers have completed the lesson and then follow up with them if they haven't done each monthly lesson, just so there's consistency across the board. And we'll also be implementing Bright Byte survey the week before winter break to hopefully see an improvement from December 2016 to now with the implementation of Be Internet Awesome.
And finally, just, we are looking at our crisis planning as well. We're reviewing and looking to update any existing cyber threat related components of the plan that would look at things such as social media. If something were out there that'd be harmful for us, how would the district react in that situation or if there was communication between a child and an adult? Look at review of the electronic communications, just doing cybercrime ransomware, what would be the response of the district if that were to occur? And also with data breach. So we need to make sure that there's components that not only, you know, what do we do from a technical standpoint, but then there's also a communications component. Because once these areas are breached, if there is a data breach, there does become a loss in trust and confidence within, within the community. Also in some instances, we want to look at if there was an instance where students had to be moved out of a school, what would be the unification process of getting, reuniting students with, with their parents? So we want to really get some of those, the details ironed out. And again, with each of these, what, taking into heart, what is our communications plan? How do we make sure that it's effectively communicated in a timely manner? And that's pretty much it. Any questions?
I'm in the building a lot and I filled out one of those forms. When you talk about the Raptor program, is this for someone who comes once to be a library reader, like a grandma? Or is it someone who's doing small group work?
Yeah.
Or a room parent or what's, what differentiates who gets?
Yeah, so the two different levels is one is if you're left alone with students, then you'd be in that higher level.
Right.
If you're, as you just mentioned, volunteering.
Yeah, you go in and you read the story with the librarians there.
Yes, so that's just a simple kind of check. Once you're in the system, you're in the system.
Right.
Once they, the system also allows you to like kind of check in and check out to know who's in your building as well.
Okay.
So if I show up, I can kind of, we can, they can be checked in, but then it's just a simple check in that sense because they're not alone with the students.
Right, yeah, I was just wondering, because there's, you know, so many of us in the PTO that are doing things and it would be nice to be able to tell those groups too who's affected and how and what that involves.
That's the one part that we've talked a lot about is just the communication plan moving forward of how we're going to discuss this. It was discussed with some parent kind of lead group, but then how?
Yes, right, no. And I know we've all filled out the form like for Mr. Gass and then, you know, or I have and we won't, he won't let you in, you know, if you don't fill out the form, he's really diligent. But it's, I noticed there's a different level to who's volunteering how many hours and who does what. So thank you. And I have one other question about Securly, the program using, is this, how long have they been around and have they had any issues or?
We've been, we've been using them since we adopted the Chrome ones.
Right, but is this, I, I remember what you're telling us about this, but are, do you like them? Are you happy?
Yes, very happy. There are other solutions that are out there. The, every year we'll revisit and evaluate them, but even in talking with other, you know, fellow directors, peers, there's, you know, pros and cons to each, you know, or benefits to some, but I think Securly is a good fit for District 96, at least at this point. But one feature that we are really, we're hoping for and we have put in requests for an enhancement is there's just the ability for parents to be able to set a timer essentially to say at 10:00 PM, which it would limit their ability to access the internet.
Sure, sure, yeah.
Right, there is actually another tool that does that, but then once we start layering on, you know, too many different tools for that and that is a newer product, so we're going to wait and see how that product evolves to see if it, it's not, not so cumbersome for parents.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions?
About, to follow up on something that Ms. King said about the hour of coding and you said that this week is the coding week or something like that. How much, I know you talked about the hour of coding in the past. Are we still, I mean, is that something that actually we do every week in all three classes or?
This is just a special hour of code week for Computer Science Education class. We encourage the staff to try it. If they want to let kids go further with it past this week, they have maybe if they have like choice time, indoor recess time, things like that, but it's not something that's currently like a part of our curriculum.
Yeah, so I, it's a great question, because I think code.org allows these fun, more fun activities, kind of like more of a drag and drop, kind of block style coding. And so this is the week, so we kind of like throw it out there, but we even were at a meeting today about how can we continue that throughout the year, so if there's some free time or if there's indoor recess or there's more time for students to try it, that they have the opportunity. Once they get into junior high, Mr. Jones has done a great job to layer in some coding into his STEAM class. And that is one of our plans for our three-year kind of roadmap for instructional technologies. How can we embrace that language? How can we embrace more coding instruction for our students? Because, you know, in this digital world, I think that's a great tool for our kids to learn.
Yeah, I would think that, you know, if you do even an hour a week, I mean, that you could really build on that, you know?
Yeah.
Probably one week a year, you probably forget it after a week, right?
Yeah.
But if you do an hour a week, you probably start to develop some intuitions over time, I imagine, you know, if you're a child.
Because even the robotics clubs they do in the team, they definitely code, but that's not until junior high. It would be really neat if they came into sixth grade, you know, and then they, because usually it's very hard to find someone in the team that is code confident, code writing confident. And so that person becomes really integral to what they're doing. And so if you have kiddos coming in that already have at least a basis, I think we would have a lot more fun getting people excited.
Yeah, and I think the, like you were saying, those who are confident, but with coding, it's a lot of trial and error.
Yeah, for sure.
It's a lot of struggle. It's a lot of, yeah, the growth mindset of like figuring something out and collaborating, working together.
And just, it's a different language, so getting them used to the tools, knowing how to put it together.
Yes. So with our little innovative student leader group, we introduced it and that was probably one of the most exciting couple of weeks when we did it with them too. So there's, I think the students are thirsty for it and I think there's a lot of great resources that they can learn and a teacher doesn't have to be confident, be like a master coder to understand it now, so.
Right, because I certainly didn't grow up learning to code when I was their age.
Yeah, you know, Python.
No, not until they, I did, I did in college, you know, they made you write, make your own website. Do you remember doing that? Yeah. I have one more content question. I was just curious when they, students are searching on websites, are they, I know my, one of my daughters, daughters has learned a little bit of this. Do they, are, how are they searching for content places that are reliable versus maybe an opinion blog or something like that? Are they given information to know how to research what is effective information?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think.
You know what I'm saying? Like there is a whole bunch of places that you could type in and get a whole bunch of different answers.
Yep, I think our media center specialists are doing a great job sharing that. Even just even on like the image search now, a lot of it is talking about copyright, you know, what is labeled for reuse with modification, start talking about the sources that we're getting our information from. So I think it's just becoming the, the classroom teachers, I think, do a great job as well just discussing what is a reliable source and kind of sharing that information with the students.
Maybe like using multiple sources instead of just like the same, I remember we used to use one, the same encyclopedia and go to different pages. That's great.
Yeah.
Because I know, I know they're doing more content analysis when they're doing research comparisons now. I noticed in junior high, they're doing more of that.
Yeah, and it's interesting too, in Google products, when you go to, let's say, insert image, it's basically only allowing you to search for copyright or images that are labeled for modification or reuse.
Right.
So I think when students even see that, they understand that you just can't take any image and just claim it to be yours.
Right.
And then also within Google, there's like explore features which allow you to search and find and they kind of filter on, you know, like some of the searches as well. So I, I think it's the classroom teachers, I just think they're so good that they're kind of instructing and guiding and helping the students to find those reliable sources.
Right, I have heard the kiddos say that they love when you come in the classroom, both of you, so thank you. I know they're always excited when you come in. They, they say that, so thank you.
It's really the most powerful.
Yeah, yeah. Anybody else have any questions?
I had a question in regards to the Securly functions. So I'm wondering if, as I understand it, so if, if there's a hit, there's, the browsing activity surrounding that is captured and reported back?
Correct. So if, and it really applies to their, like their searches or if they're going to certain websites. So if it's, if it's flagged, if it's a keyword flag, if it's a content flag, then there's an email notification. Right now, they just come to me and then I'm disseminating the information, but we do want to set it up to where especially at the, at the junior high, I think we get a higher rate at the junior high, that would allow also contact with the administration because the more people that can be contacted internally, because some stuff does happen at, you know, we'll get something at 11 o'clock, midnight if, if, yes, if a student's up late and then we're seeing it, seeing it in the morning. So the more eyes that can be on it internally within administration. And then also the ability for them to run reporting on the fly so that they know how to do that. From the parent perspective and we're, we're kind of testing it out, we want to, you know, see how it works and really understand it because I can't set up an account. So it's tough for, tough for us to see that student interface or what the parent interface is. So working with a couple of parents to, to kind of see what that is so that we, when we roll it out, we can better explain what exactly a parent would have access to. But through the app, my understanding is that essentially you open up the app and you'd be able to see the browsing history of, of your child, which again would just be a level of awareness of even if it's, if it's something, there could be something that's beyond, well, we're pretty much filtering on everything, but at least it makes you aware of not only what they're searching, but when they are. So if they are up at 1:00 in the morning and, and searching or just, you know, you're at least aware of their activity and where they're going.
If they're just in health class researching a topic, then you know it's fine.
Exactly, but also.
They'll put a lot of cool stuff in there, but you don't want to flag them if there's something that's normal, you know?
Right, because there are times that, there are some topics that they might be searching on that they actually might be. Right, because there, there are times that, there are some topics that they might be searching on, that they actually might be researching in health class.
Yeah, I was thinking about that, yeah.
And so there are false positives, but, and then when, when went to implement it, that was some of the feedbacks from, from some of the other districts, is that while we're getting a lot of false positives, it, it really hasn't been that, that case for us, at least thus far. We don't get a lot of the, the, a lot of the alerts. They're very manageable at this point, and I think what it's showing is that our, you know, for the, the, but most students are, you know, kind of staying within the, the realms of the, of the, the content filter, so.
But I guess, so from what I'm hearing you, from you then, essentially that the history for all the students connected are retained for a certain amount of time?
Yeah, we have the ability to search back, I believe a year within Securly, so typically what will happen is if we do get a, a notification, we'll go back a week. Because if we're getting notifications, and those, those notifications are in real time, if there really was something within the last week, we would have probably gotten a notification already. But it, it also does give you some context to their searches. In some instances, it's a song lyric, you know, they're searching something, and then you see what they're searching around it, and you identify, well, this is a false positive, and it's, it's not escalated at that point. So that's, and then, and that is not a, that, that decision isn't made in a silo. That's where we involve the administration.
I only have one more comment, that having been a, a person, when your social security number used to be your student number, I, I really appreciate that you guys are keeping track of that. If I was your employer, I'd really like that, because it's so easily manipulated, and so I like that you guys are planning for everyone, not just the students.
And you're right, and we're continuing, I mean, and that's, and that's not a static, you know, process, that is a, it's dynamic, and we're trying to continually evolve and really keep up with, you know, what's happening in society around this.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we're going to pass it on to Mr. Hunt for policy.
All right. Some of the coordinators have given, opened your water bottles. Let's see, who's ready for some policy? Let's see, so when I saw the list, I was, was happy at first, because I'm thinking if they're 12, we could sing them to the 12 Days of Christmas. Unfortunately, they're 23. So, uh, let's see, so we've, and Martha and I have spoken a couple of times on these, and as per usual with the usual, with the press updates, a lot of these updates are to footnotes or legalese, or sometimes it's a change in language that, for the most part, is insignificant. There were in this update definitely quite a few that had some significant changes to them, so we definitely, we've spoken a great deal on them, and want to be best informed about them as possible. So, let's see, the first couple of ones, we'll start with you, with the, the board member oath and conduct, as well as related issue of board member development. I think, yeah, for the, there are changes to the oath in response to recent legal change, or law change. And I should say as well that a lot of the changes, the substantive changes are coming from, stemming from the recent legislative session that's ended. The board member, definitely there was a lot of additions to the board member oath. Now, I don't know if, some folks have been on the board a little longer than I, could you, could, when we make a change like this, is this something we're all required to do again, or is this only be for new incoming members?
I think for new.
That's what I would expect, but, just making sure.
Well, we can all recite them if you want.
Perhaps we could do it, you know, as, as caroling kind of activity. Once, well, yes, this is the first reading as well, so we'll talk on that. Uh, let's see, so, and then as we come to policy number four here, and that's 415, or item bullet point number four. So 415, this is identity protection question, and we actually had, I think Martha had reached out to our attorneys to get some information on this.
Right, so this is, maybe this is the most interesting one, Dan. So, there seems to be a question if school districts are covered, or are sort of responsible for PIPA, which is Personal Information Protection Act. And press, which is made up of a group of attorneys that also review this, and our own attorney from our law firm are really in disagreement here, that Brian Crowley from Franzick would say that we should be responsive to PIPA. And so what you have in front of you here is you have two different policies. You have the one proposed from our law firm, and you have the one proposed from press. And you'll see through press, what you get is a consult with your attorney type language on this. So this is something that I, in terms of our first reading, is to take a look really at both of them that are inserted here for your review, and has the board adopted additional language related to the PIPA requirements? That would be consistent really with the one from, from Franzick. So again, this is a first read, people could, you know, take the time and opportunity they want to take a look at this. You know, I think in our conversations, Dan, we would probably lean toward using the one proposed by our school district law firm specifically.
I think it's the more conservative of the two, when it talks about, you know, a law not applying, or I guess if press is saying the law doesn't apply to us, and our own attorneys are thinking that it does, plus our own attorneys mentioned that they expect potential corrections to this. In the future, it seems like the, the more conservative way to go, or might be a better way to go on this. But considering that there is a question of yes, no, I'm trying to think, have we handled these before in the past? Eventually, there would be a vote on these. At the first reading, do we get a sense from the board?
I, I tend to lean more to the conservative route. It's just, I, I know, at a, I know at the college level, they're bound by this, or I shouldn't, shouldn't say no, but I know other universities follow this, even though that, they, because they have, they're in their student health centers, they follow this. I mean, they're, they follow HIPAA, and I think, I mean, so, I'm not a HIPAA expert, but I have dealt with HIPAA. It's very, I mean, it's very conservative, it's very tight, it's very patient focused, and the penalties are real, so.
Actually, I'm going to just jump into David and say that it's not about HIPAA, it's about PIPA.
Oh, PIPA?
Yeah.
I made that same mistake.
That's what I was, that's what I thought. I, I, I thought I heard HIPAA, and I was like, reading this, I'm like, it doesn't sound like HIPAA.
So it's Personal Information Protection Act.
Yeah.
What is the, what, in a nutshell, what is the crux of the matter here? What's the difference of opinion between their, between our attorneys and the, and the, and the press attorneys? What, what exactly is it bound to?
I think it's removing the footnote about PIPA and its, the, the updated press policy, which we had just updated in 2017, so our previous one on identity protection was not old. They removed a section of it, perhaps that it had been overly cumbersome. I think our attorney is saying go back to a policy that, that notes PIPA. When I read them, there's not a big difference in my, in my view, yeah, I, yeah. He thinks press is going to come back and revise it again.
Oh, okay.
So maybe we'd be smart to address the one from our law firm, and.
Will it be more efficient than doing it again, and they change their mind, if that's the case?
But the language changes don't seem terribly significant to me. And in terms of our practices, I think they really speak to people that handle social security numbers, there needs to be clear reason for why you're handling social security numbers. We know that we're handling them in terms of payroll and insurance essentially, and that the people that handle social security numbers are trained, and the protection and privacy related to them, and that staff would be well informed of our, our policies.
And how do you feel about that for our, our employees? Do you feel like?
Well, it's really only district office staff that have access, and it's because of insurance, and it's because of payroll.
And so we seem.
I think our practices are good.
Trained and competent.
And as a matter of fact, we are going to be going through a whole transition, as you know, around our payroll and personnel accounting, and they're making a shift, Jim, right? They're actually shifting away from social security numbers being the employee identifier in that system.
So, in the, in the draft I'm reading, we've got three different colors. We have orange, blue, and, and purple.
Right.
What's, what's what here exactly? Who's, who's proposing what?
So you have, and what you have attached is, well, the one from press, you know, green is to be added, red is to be deleted. I guess that's fairly straightforward. And then the one from, from our attorney, I have to go back and look at the colors. The blue off in the column are comments.
The one, the one, the one in the, in the, in the text itself, I see some orange wording here, there's some, the stated reason for collection of the social security number must be relevant to the document purpose, and then some orange strikeout, and then some blue struck out.
Blue is all struck out, yeah.
So the blue is being removed.
By our attorneys?
No.
Oh, by, by press?
By, by press.
By press from a previous policy revision.
For boards that have consulted with their attorney and want to include PIPA mandates, they're going to add all of this.
Put it back.
Into there, which is almost the exact same language.
Right.
Basically, press has struck a lot of language, and if you want to keep it in there, this is the new language that's going to go in there.
Okay, and then what's this purpose?
I'm not sure why it's.
Yeah, I, I guess to show that they're melted, melted together.
Or it's just an addition.
I'm not exactly sure.
Purple stays.
Right.
I think, because clearly this is a different.
It looks kind of like an addition to me.
It does.
Looks like an addition rather than a rewrite.
Generally saying, or the attorney is saying is that this would go in to where, because they're trying to say strike all of this, number five is gone, but instead you're going to add that in.
Okay, okay.
And if you read it, it's very simple, it's almost the exact same word. So it's basically saying, yeah, so we're going to still follow PIPA. This is a conversation I know we've had on the board before we've looked at this policy.
Yes, I know.
Maybe policies, or maybe you were at the time.
I think so, it was, it's been within the last year.
About you wanted to know if it was big enough, deep enough, and they're basically saying, just remove it, so, so I'm thinking the board would lean towards the option of keeping the PIPA.
What was their rationale for?
And I'll just go back, from the April 19th and 2017, was when we adopted it last time around, so it's just not that long ago. They are saying the policies unchanged, footnotes are updated to clarify requirements under the PIPA Act amended by Public Act 99503, and options also clarified. Districts choosing that option should update the policy.
So it sounds like through what we're talking, that we would want to adopt the additional language regarding PIPA requirements.
Which would be consistent with the law firms.
Right, and it sounds like, I, I just know from other conversations we've had, it seems.
And we won't vote on it until next meeting, but for people, you know, some people want to give that further consideration, but I think that seems consistent with our conversations we had too, and then our conversations with the attorney.
It'd be interesting to have our attorney or someone, I wouldn't want to necessarily pay them to do this extra, but to have them contact press and say, do you anticipate rewriting this again in the future? Why are you doing this?
But in fact, that's what they've told us, I guess, sort of.
Yes, but I wonder what is press's response to that.
Oh, official response.
Official response.
Well, uh, so, well, are we?
Yes, move on to insufficient funds, debt recovery, and free reduced prices.
Yes, next grouping, we have, yeah, two policies which are closely interrelated, 445 and 413, having to do insufficient funds, checking debt recovery, as well as free reduced brunch, reduced price food services. Both the, the updates relate back to recovering debt for, essentially, you know, lunches that are not paid for, not compensated for, and I think the update was for a standard of five days' worth of lunches. And so both of them have a separate question of board adopting an optional census.
So we do provide free and reduced lunch, so we would, we would adopt option one, and then the board would have the option to consider if you would want to essentially pursue debt recovery when a student has less than five lunches unpaid for. And we have a fairly generous approach to this, and my sense is that, speaking, you know, for all of you, that that's, that's been our approach. Our meals are $3, we have a relatively small number of children who get free and reduced lunch. I certainly don't think this is creating significant debt for the district to.
No, I was just curious, we just talked about that online payment system, and it was mentioned that they could, you could keep track of who's not paying with that. I certainly wouldn't want to go after the, a couple of dollars just for one person, but I suppose if you had a chronic person, could we just not look at the online system and say?
Definitely could be used for recovery.
If it was a chronic instance or something.
We're talking five.
Five days.
The question is, would you want to go less than five? Like, would you want to pursue for two lunches?
Rule was $2, yeah.
So, yes, three dollars, three times five, so yes, 15 and under.
I know, the amount of time that would take.
How much you got on you, Dave?
I mean, that's part of their portal, and it's no big deal, and they pay for everything all at once, you know, then I want the money, but.
I think it's five periods, so that number triggers the, so it would be five in a week, or five in a month, or five, right.
Cumulative.
I have, yeah, I have to, I can only imagine or guess that there are districts, as we know, where there's significant portion of children that are free and reduced lunch, and for, if children aren't, then covering a portion of the cost, is that more significant to the overall functioning of the school district? And for us, it, it really isn't that, but it does, it does come from this hunger, Hunger Free Students Bill, Hunger Free Students Bill of Rights Act.
So do we need to talk about the two specific questions?
Right, well, the first question is really, do you have students that get free and reduced lunch? We do. And then the question is, would you want to?
Lower the amount.
Lower the amount.
Well, I say no.
I, I can't imagine why we would lower it. I don't see how it helps us.
Do we have, do we have a problem with this?
Yeah, I was just going to ask that.
Not that we're really aware of. I mean, it's, it's not been reported to us, or, as I said, our meals are $3, these, yeah.
And then moving on to the safety policy, there's a specific change, again, due to change in law. This is talking about an open, addressing a drill for the school shooting, and I think this is mandating that it be done within the first 90 days of school.
You know, we have recently high school schools, remember what month those were in?
We typically run them in January, so we probably would be moving them up.
I thought we did some already.
We may have already done them this year, I don't know, maybe those are here in the buildings. I'm not sure when they last were, so, but this wouldn't be onerous for us to make sure, you know, always make sure that we're in the first 90 days, yeah.
I was just curious, I just felt like they had done one recently.
Right, we run them manually.
It seems earlier than we used to do.
Uh, let's see, and then five, policy 530, talking about hiring process and criteria, and that also relates back to substitute, substitute teacher policy as well. There were changes specifically adjusting upward the amount of time that retired teachers can substitute, as well as some new requirements around short-term substitute teachers.
Right, so this can be an emergency credential, I shouldn't say emergency credential, like a short-term sub-license. There is a substitute shortage in the state of Illinois, and that subs under, and I may be now mixing my policies a little bit with hiring and then the substitutes, but that subs hired under that kind of short-term or more, that's really under substitute teachers, sorry, I'm jumping ahead, but they would have to go through additional training. Right now, we are not hiring anybody on that emergency credential.
Are we seeing problems with getting subs?
We, we have, particularly on a day where there's like a heavy, you know, heavy use, sometimes if we're running even like our own professional development workshop within the school day or something, and we have a greater need. What we often do is you look to our licensed certified paraprofessionals and move them into the teaching position, so we make adjustments. We have not had to reach out to the level of the, the sort of short-term sub-license people, but I think it could happen. I mean, school districts in this area, you know, are all really talking about it.
So it, it is an issue?
It is real, it, it feels real. I think we've been fortunate to not have significant impact from it, but I think to be prepared that we could.
Let's see, so, and then next is 560, which is expenses. I think the main change there talks about adding language about something is lost, it's not necessarily an expense. And then the staff development program, changes there I believe are pretty minor.
Let's see.
Yeah, it looks to be footnotes.
All right, they do extend the training around mental, warning signs of mental illness and suicidal behavior in youth, K through, K through 12, K through eight for our purposes. That has been previously reserved as more of a. that has been previously reserved as more of a middle school required training.
And when will that happen?
So, we've done that at some of our after-school PD at the middle school, but we also have the online training option, so we use a, for a lot of our mandated trainings, staff have an online option, and so that could certainly be inserted there.
Okay, and we've mentioned the 5220 for substitute teacher, policy changes there, 620, school year calendar day, it looks to be footnote changes.
Yeah, but I'll make a comment on that one.
Oh, that's right.
So even though it seems relatively minor that there's just a footnote change, there actually has been a significant change in the state law around this, that the instructional day, five-hour minimum requirement has been lifted to essentially no minimum requirement for a school day. It is something that's getting a lot of buzz among superintendents and principals and curriculum people. It's, it's interesting, it really raises the interesting questions around e-learning days, snow days, late arrival instead of a full snow day, the first and last day of school. We do have a teacher contract that speaks to an instructional day, that speaks to a professional workday for our staff. We also have a robust instructional program where we really feel we need the time we have for the instructional areas that we want, but it's, you know, the conversations I've been part of really, it tends to be more high schools that are excited about this, is potentially, again, more online learning options, or work site learning for students, et cetera. So it's somewhat interesting, as I said, it's getting a lot of buzz in terms of reality and actual change for an elementary school district. I don't know that I foresee a lot of change, other than maybe snow days, and maybe that first and last day of school, if you recall, those used to be shortened days in the state council, they had to be full days.
Full days, yeah.
I think there's some thought that maybe that last day of school, when kids mostly want to get out, and be able to have our staff stay longer to finish up some things, and maybe kids not stay the entire day, that would be something we would take a look at.
Now, remember, we always had conversations like that.
Yeah, yeah, is that the best instructional day? But anyway, it gives us some choice, I think some people have described it as mandate relief, so something we'll continue to think about.
I guess I just have a question, then, so you're lifting the number of hours per day, but they're keeping the numbers of days.
Yes.
That just seems very, that doesn't seem, yeah, it seems, doesn't seem...
I think some of the, again, I don't want to speak for the state necessarily, but some of the conversations that I've been part of would be something like, maybe a high school student that has part of the day they spend on a work site, as opposed to in the classroom, so it's kind of this idea of valuing learning over valuing seat time. And that tends to be the conversation for elementary school students, I don't know how much of that will really change, and I don't know that I want to speak for implementation at a high school level, so.
I have a question, though, now that school evaluations are more heavily related to absenteeism, what would then be the requirement for a child being in attendance, what does that mean?
Right.
Is that a partial day, does that mean they're here? I remember my daughter went for a science fair thing, and they marked her absent, but she's only gone an hour.
Yeah, yeah.
So it felt kind of silly, like she was doing school things.
Right, and then some of our attendance around safety, right, so, yeah, when we call and say, oh, she had the science fair, or she had, you know, I mean, some of those, so the idea that if the, going to the science fair is part of the curriculum, then that would be a school day, so they tend to talk about attendance and student engagement, so engaged in, you know, the prescribed activities.
But again, how many hours is that?
Right.
And I don't, I'm not sure I understand what they're getting at.
If you're, if you're, so again, if, maybe I'm overinterpreting the question to be something like, oh, my child had to leave and go to a doctor's appointment, but my child came to school for two hours.
What if they're there for, right, half a day, does that count?
Right, I think that's more of a attendance and tracking issue than a...
But it is important, because state funding is dependent on attendance, and so is our ratings.
And if people are aware, so they've changed that all to what they're just calling chronic absenteeism, and they're saying, it doesn't matter if you're sick, it doesn't matter if you're on vacation, doesn't, you know, if you're, if you're not here, you're not learning in the way that the school district is recommending that you learn. So it's a number that the state is carefully monitoring, they're asking the school district to carefully monitor that, and they've kind of changed the philosophy around it.
But it's somewhat arbitrary in its administration, and so I'm curious what they're going to...
Yeah, I think it'll be interesting, it'll be interesting to see if the school district can make changes based on this, too.
Okay, next is policy 660, which is curriculum content, and the changes there, there's some clarifying language to talk about the superintendent or designee making decisions in regards to the curriculum. There is an additional mandate that's added that talks about kindergarten through grade six education available to students concerning traffic accidents related to walking and biking.
So we will add that in, and we, just our informal research, apparently Brookfield, Village Brookfield does something with Hollywood School students, and I think there's something that goes on at Blythe, and the other three schools will look at probably adding something in, something could probably be easily added.
Well, that could happen during hike and bike week, it'd be perfect.
Yeah, yeah, partnering with Parks and Recreation, or certainly probably doing something within our PD.
Yeah, maybe do that personally with bike, like bike, they do, and they do watching the kids about safety.
I know, yeah, I know they do.
That may be on the mandate then.
Because they bring in the cyclists, too, to do tricks, let me talk about that.
Yeah.
Great.
And we get on to policy 7100, that's related to health eye, dental examinations, immunizations, and exclusions of students, so the big change there is one added section that is talking about providing information materials to different types of vaccinations.
And flu shots.
And flu shots.
Do we have a high rate of students that are not being immunized for religious reasons?
We do not, so Pam monitors that number, it's a, yeah.
So we don't have a severe immune progression?
And for policy 7190, student behavior, there are some modifications added, again, to recent law changes that are talking about the administration of medical cannabis references, something known as Ashley's Law, which I believe was provided to the board earlier, earlier this week. The, this is something that follows Illinois state law recommendations, it's very restrictive in terms of how this would be used and administered, not administered by anyone on school staff, or a school nurse, it's only administered by the caregiver or parent of a student it's applicable to, and then once it's, it has to be, and oil essentially not a, nothing that's smoked, or administered any other way, and it's on the property while it's administered, and then it's off.
Right.
And then the next policy, 7260, exemption from physical education, I believe we've discussed this one fairly recently as well.
Right, so there's going to be some further definition, but we had already talked about not exempting students from participating in near scholastic sports, that kind of thing.
And policy 7270, that relates to administering medicines to students, and I think the big change there is talking about having an assigned asthma medication onsite or at the school for administration, administering to students who are having a severe asthma attack.
Right, so there are two questions there, one is, would we adopt a subsection regarding the designated caregiver administration of medical cannabis, which seems to be required, and there's a lot of detail there, but the one that's optional is having undesignated asthma medication. And if you recall, a while back, decision was made to have undesignated EpiPens, so for kids that were having an allergic reaction, potential anaphylaxis, now comes somewhat more interesting, or perhaps gray area question about undesignated asthma medication. And one of the things they talk about is having it accessible before, during, and after school, and then looking at the feasibility of obtaining a prescription, which we think maybe our nurses have, you know, again, this is something that's been talking about in kind of the, talked about in the, amongst school nurses already, Pam's well aware of it, they really talk about outlining the advantages and disadvantages of implementing the plan, and also somewhere here, they really talk about sort of awareness in the community. So again, we are fortunate to be in a community where kids really mostly get very good medical care, so we're not looking at a lot of students with like an undiagnosed or untreated, you know, asthma condition, could it happen, I suppose, but this one feels a bit more gray in terms of...
Right, because it's up to that person to be certain that that's what's happening to the student.
Right, right, right.
That's which medication, is it, it's...
Yeah.
Are we better off waiting to see how this plays out with other districts?
I think yes, Joel, that would be, and that's really just the informal consultation with our attorney, too, is to perhaps see what other districts decide to do, you know, again, this is very new, whereas I think a lot of people felt really strongly about, it is very possible that a child could be in school and have their first ever allergic reaction to something.
True, true.
With potentially life-threatening consequences. The idea of a untreated asthma condition, right, it seems a bit more complicated in terms of maybe that even the dosing and the prescribing and the access to the inhaler.
I guess we're reaching out about asthma medications, I mean...
Like an inhaler.
It would be prescribed to the district rather than to a student, so we keep it here, and someone would, if they see something that, they'd have to be thinking that's what's happening, so it's up to that nurse to diagnose them, and then administer it. But I guess, I don't have an asthmatic child, are there differences in the medications that we would be required to research, what's most effective, or how does that happen?
I have an inhaler, my daughter has an inhaler, it's the exact same one, exact same dose, so, I mean, she always carries it around, put it in her backpack, so she's, I mean, but, but she also doesn't have it severely, so...
Right, are there, are there children that they could be severely affected if we didn't, if it was at the first time?
Yeah, it can be very, it can be very severe, and so, depending on the severity of it, so if this child forgets it, or doesn't have it.
This would, that'd be for a child who forgets it, this, well, this would really be for a child who's never been diagnosed, it's not been recommended for them, it's sort of that child that would encounter that first time ever condition.
Yeah, I mean, it's not going to come on, at least our experience has been, it doesn't come on, like, it's not like a allergic reaction to a peanut or something, where an EpiPen can actually save a life.
Save your life, yeah. And Pam is going to take this back to our nurse team.
Yeah, I'd like to hear their response, since they're the ones that do it and understand the details of it.
Sure, there'd be a lot of questions we'd have for the doctor, if we were to take that step and pursue getting a prescription, we need to have a lot of those questions clarified from the doctor who would prescribe it, which I understand it's, it's not necessarily a slam dunk to find just any doctor who would prescribe it to the district, I mean, rather than to a person.
Right, so my, our sense is in Cook County, here in our school district, we've really relied on like a colleague, almost personal colleague, contact of one of our nurses to make the prescription for the EpiPens. I know Pam was sharing, like, DuPage County, the county health department actually makes the prescription for the EpiPens. The asthma inhaler, it just feels like there's, there are more questions than answers right now, and so I think we'd like time to research it with our nurses team, I think, Joel, to your point, to see if other districts are going to start to move ahead doing this, and this is certainly something we will revisit on the 19th, but also we could continue to revisit, you know, as we understand more about processes that different school districts are engaged in. Pam, do you want to add any more?
No, really, I mean, I think, really, EpiPen is more emergency reaction, duration for, as you mentioned, with asthma, it's coming, it's not that needed action, so I think those are just some things we need to look at, if a child was having great difficulty breathing, you can call 911, so I'm just trying to get a sense of how other districts are approaching this as well, as it's so new as to how, and what it's, our nurse suggested.
Right. Move on to the next one?
Move on to the next one, so, next one, policy 7290, suicide and depression awareness and prevention, the changes here seem to be mostly around language, not really anything substantive.
Back to that K through, that we talked about earlier.
They took out the language grade seven through 12 and...
Changed it to the younger.
Changed it to all grades, yeah.
And then there is student athlete concussions and head injuries, I believe this was asking the district to provide a brochure, brochure for students.
Right, and it's something we do, and it's something we'll take another look at to make sure, because they talk about concussions that may occur out of school, and that was something that we would take a closer look at.
And then what takes us to 4130E, exhibit for free and reduced lunch, price food services,
meal charge notifications, and this again references back to the five student lunches for collections, and also mentions the Hunger Free Student Rights Bill, Hunger Free Students' Bill of Rights Act. And so for 22, and then the home stretch. So exhibit, the five-year review, this is, so, as per press updates, some of the, a lot of policies that are not necessarily changed over time are reviewed every five years, in this case, it's exhibit 280E1, Board Member Code of Conduct, and there are no changes, but it is a five-year review. And also, the last one, draft update is rewritten, this is exhibit 340E, it's a checklist for superintendent employee contract negotiation process. There are several changes to that, there are also some mentions about severances agreements and some limitations on, in terms of salary, final year salary increases to increase the size of pensions, but these are essentially, I mean, changes in the district's favor to prevent the district from overextending itself on some more egregious agreements. All right, hard truth to the fairies.
I knew you were going to say that.
I did, in my enthusiasm, though, I jumped right into the resolution, or the policy update. I did miss the comment, though, from, seeing if we can get some comments from Mr. Barsati, who attended the recent conference and vote on our behalf.
Right.
Did he attend, it was another, on a backfall? Obviously, yeah, gun issue, bringing it in school, focused primarily around, like, local control, as a lot of these items seem to, but it did, it did not succeed, they did not adopt it, but it was not a slam dunk, it was...
Pretty close, wasn't it?
It was pretty close, yes.
Was it really? That's, that's interesting.
Yeah, I don't know, remember the exact number, but I think it was like 214 to 179, yeah. So, I'm sure it'll come up again.
Anything else interesting that was discussed at the meeting?
That was pretty much it, yeah, picture of one of our board meetings, but a lot more.
Stretching out of two ways.
When you say it was more about local control, was, districts still have the ability to request this from their local lunches?
Right, they just, they wanted the ISBA to make that.
To advocate on that.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you for doing that.
Definitely, Policy Committee rests.
All right, well, thanks, Dan, thanks for, you and Martha, for going through all of those 23 policies and enlightening us on the highlights there. Rich is not here today, so just, maybe I'll just ask Mr. Pittin to come up and talk about the tax levy.
I'm not sure, but I'm going to try. We've got the tax levy, it's including your board packet, there haven't been any changes since the last meeting, and we don't anticipate any before we vote on it next meeting. After consulting with the assessor, we estimated a 1% decrease in EAV and a million dollars in new property, so the total levy is $25,725,000, which is a 2.64% increase over the 2017 tax extension. So the total levy is $25,725,000, which is a 2.64% increase over the 2017 tax extension. On December 19th, we'll have a hearing and take action to approve the tax levy. Any questions on that?
Then I think you also have another item here on the Property Tax Relief Grant discussion. You maybe tell us about that.
So, moving on, in your board packet, there's, I put a lot of information in there about this Property Tax Relief Grant. There's 800 districts in Illinois that can apply for this grant. We're ranked 67 on that list, and after talking with the representative at ISB, they kind of expected the top 20 or so would end up getting some relief money. There's, what we would do if we were to get some relief money is we would have to abate on our local taxes at whatever the total amount is, and then they would give us relief of about 40%. And then the state would include that in our funding every year, as long as everything's fully funded. So we'd be giving up a little bit of local tax money and the control we have with that for less state money. And it could, if we were optimistic, if they keep that in there for three years, the break evens in the middle of the second and third year. So if they fully fund the, the minimum and don't require us to abate anymore to get it, we could come out ahead.
So anyway, it works is that you get, you get an immediate cut in property taxes for one year, and then the state gives you 40% of that over three years, basically. So over the three years that they pay, you actually get a little bit more than, than you lost, if they actually pay it.
Right, so it's, it's, there's a risk that, that state money might not be there over those years.
Yeah, I was going to say, there's a real, I think, mixed opinion among superintendents, and I think it's a good question for boards to consider if it's, really, if it's worth it.
Worth it.
Worth it, you know? And yet, there's a, I think, sense that, of course, we should say we'd like more state funding for education programs, but is the money really there, and would it really continue to flow, so?
But it comes with significant strings and significant unpredictability.
And what are the chances they receive the grant?
Sorry?
What are the chances that we would be successful with the grant, considering our position at 67?
The first, out of the first 67, where we are, you know, 40 or 47 or so would have to not even apply.
Right, right. And have you talked to other districts about this?
Yeah, so it was a, it was a pretty significant point of conversation at the last Westbrook superintendent's meeting, and I think there was encouragement from the state that school districts ought to apply, you know, to say, yes, we're in need of state funds. But there was a concern that even though districts who felt they were far down the list, probably similar to us, saying, wait, what if other people don't apply, and what if I really get it? Do I want it?
Right.
So it's...
Is the idea that you get only 20 districts will get, only 20 districts will share in this $50 million?
Contact that had today.
So that's, that's, two and a half million dollars each if it were equally shared. Is that right? We expect to get something like two million, two and a half million dollars?
It depends which, which districts and what subset of the districts apply.
Okay.
And then they have to come up, they calculate it from there.
Okay.
They don't, so the maximum that we could get is we would have to abate 3.2 million in taxes, in property taxes, to get 1.2 million a year. Chances are, it'll be a lower number than that, but that's, I think, almost worst-case scenario, I guess you could call it. So the first year, we would be down 1.9 million in hopes that in the long run, we get it all back. So we can apply for it and decline it if we get it.
Right, I don't want to be a tax...
In there, it said you don't have to, if you are awarded it, you do not have to take it.
The only downside to that is that another district won't get the money then.
Why aren't they unwilling to reallocate?
It'll get reallocated into...
You're saying they won't give another district the money?
They wouldn't go through this again. So they wouldn't say, okay, 50 districts apply, now 30 say they don't want it, let's start over. They would just, they would allocate the money that, and if there's some that we turn down, it would go back to the state and get allocated through the minimum Tier Four distribution of money.
Interesting.
So we would get pennies back in that.
How does the abatement process work exactly? How does the, when you say abatement, what does that mean exactly?
So, what I got from ISB is that we would, it would be a one-time refund of tax money. I'm not sure how the county would give that back to the taxpayers. It shouldn't affect the next tax levy. But the way it's written in the law, it says that reduction will be added back. So being a math major, I think, well, that's a negative number we're adding. I think there's a little risk in the interpretation of the law, too. So if, let's say it was a million dollars, and we take it out of our tax levy, is it gone every year in the future?
Right.
I, I mean, I think the easiest answer at this point is we, we could apply for it. Chances are, we won't have any decisions to make and clarify some of these issues, but I think that, and even the person from ISB said they're implementing it the way it's written, and she didn't know that it was written the way they intended, so...
The whole thing sounds very arbitrary in our case. We're taking 20, why don't they just give everyone a check of $50,000?
Why not just give everyone something? I know, it's a crazy sense.
Isn't it crazy? I mean, the whole thing sounds crazy.
I think they want to say they're trying to...
I think, I think it's the whole, like, the intent, is we're trying to...
Yeah, we're trying to give property tax relief. I think that's all they need.
Yeah, that was the first comment, so it was the attorney for the IESA spoke to the superintendent's group and said, you should all be applying for this. And the room sort of exploded immediately, saying like, what? You know, because we should all be applying for this, and that we all would want property tax relief. But not given sort of the twists and turns of it that are like, really, do we want it? Because is it, you know, going back to this, the conversation that you've all been having, is it, is it a good value?
Why don't they just make it simple? They've got some extra money, why don't they just cut a check?
Just hand it out evenly.
Right, isn't that, isn't that...
That's a very good question.
Three years, a piece of three years. You get it maybe, and if someone else applies, you get different.
Can you remind us of our state aid number? What comes into us? Because it's not a significant portion for us. Do you remember, was it 600?
8%, it's 8%.
Is it 8%? I was trying to remember what...
It's about 2% federal, 8% state, and the rest is local of various kinds.
Right. So can we compare that difference and see if it's worth it or not? Because that could be lost? Yeah, I don't know what they're doing.
I mean, I guess this question is, the board want to provide a direction, apply, don't apply, apply, see what happens.
Really, at this point, that's it, apply, don't apply, and then...
Is the application process, like, exhausting?
No, they've made it super simple. It's like four questions.
So it's not like...
I think they even included it, it's one page, and it's filled out for the maximum right now, and superintendent and board secretary have to sign it.
So pretty much, there is no application process? It's very easy?
So, just so, if you can, so what happens if we apply, we get it, and then we decide we don't want it? What happens if it goes back to the state?
Goes back, the state keeps it, and then they get it to school districts through another method. It'll be split up more over the 800 districts.
But you said it would go to the Tier Four schools.
Is that...
Did you say that it would go more towards the Tier Four schools, or that's what they expected?
That's the conduit to get the money back through the tiering system. We're Tier Four, so we're unlikely to get much. That's what I wanted to say.
Does somebody have an opinion?
Well, Jim, you wrote a email to Martha, or memo, and you said that there's some state aid implications. Have you been able to get in touch with Jason or Letitia?
So that's, I talked to Latisha today, and that's, that's where I got this other information. And there wouldn't be any, any ramifications. She actually thought we were in a good position for this if we got the money, because our tax rate is so high, and we're 67th on the list.
Right. When would this all happen? Assuming you would buy and...
The application is due, I think, January 7.
Okay.
There's a calendar in here, Sharon, somewhere?
Oh, yeah, no, I got it. You're right.
Grant amounts we put on on May 20.
May.
Towards the end of the document.
Thank you.
So, worst-case scenario, let's say, is what, that we get, let's say we get $3 million, we abate $3 million, and the state pays us nothing, and we've lost $3 million. Is that, is that...
Yeah. That's our worst case.
I guess, Mike, this would be my question, is the process to apply is not too difficult. Can we possibly get that answer? Can we get an answer, or at least better clarity on, sort of, if we get $3 million, and we abate $3 million, then we're...
Oh, no.
No, we're not.
We'd have to apply and kind of be in the game, and then find out, and we can always pull out and say we don't want to continue.
I mean, I like the idea of lower property taxes, but at the same token, I don't like the idea of giving up. It doesn't, the risk seems a little, risk seems high, the reward seems low. And so, that's sort of where I'm, I'm leaning towards, it's like, but...
Is this going to be an annual process, like, ongoing? Or is this a one-time?
If they allocate another, so in the next budget, if there's 350 million put in there, then we'd go through the next process, do it again.
But if we are selected, then we, then we get the three-year payment. We don't have to reapply like that, right? As we get, we would be paid every year for three years, not like it's a...
But I think I'm with...
I don't know, I assume we would have to reapply, but I don't...
David, in the fact that we know the state budget is a disaster, so guarantees of any money...
I don't think there are any guarantees.
Past one year is about, there is no guarantee. So we possibly, we'd get 40% of this money, and then years two and three, we're at zero, and so we've abated 100%. We've only got 40%. And considering state politics, this seems really risky.
Is there any way to estimate how, what it would look like on an individual basis if we, for disobeyment?
For, like, property owners?
Yes.
There hasn't been any, I don't know how the county would turn that back. I assume it'd be a small percentage of what you paid.
If our levy was .5 million, this would be 10%, this would be like a 10% tax cut on one year, roughly, right? It would then be roughly 10, 12%.
I would think they'd have to do it on what you paid.
Yes. And it's...
Well, we don't have to apply till January, so, and this doesn't require formal board action, but we would certainly want, you know, board consensus on this, so we could also bring it back on the December 19th meeting.
Could we do that?
Yeah, sure, why don't we do that?
Think about this a little bit more and re-read.
I mean, I don't know, Jim, if you want to, you've also been with the Illinois School Business Officials and these conversations as well.
Yeah, there's a, a lot of differing opinions from the business managers also.
What is your, what are your thoughts on this? I mean...
I don't think it's worth the risk. I wouldn't bet my money on it.
Okay. That's good enough for me.
Well, the fact that each of us has this kind of, it seems like we all have a place of uncertainty is not a good...
Right, I guess I'm, I'm just doing like some rough math in my head, based on like how much money we would get, and if it does actually reduce property taxes, I mean, I don't know how many homes are in Riverside, like, in Brookfield, Riverside, where we get funds from, but I can't imagine it, I mean, granted, it'd be probably like $200, $300, I'm assuming, just rough, very, very rough math. I mean, that's, that's a nice chunk of change, but is that, it just, it just doesn't, like, the risk seems, again, too high to me for the reward.
Who has control of the money? I mean, as a community, there's no risk, right? As a community, we benefit, we only benefit, right? As a community, we only can get more money, right? If even the state pays us nothing, we haven't, as a community, lost anything.
Right.
Question is, who has control of the money? Does the school district have it, or does the taxpayer have it? And that's, that's really the issue, so the question is, do we feel like we, you know, the only way I think we should take the bet is that we feel like we have enough reserves not to worry about, you know, losing the control for that $3 million, whatever. That's, that's the only, so, that's, that's the question, I think the question matter.
And again, it goes back to, I mean, I think our reserves are good, but I don't think it's worth the, still worth the risk.
We could also abate the money...
Especially with the facilities that we're doing.
Without getting involved in the grant.
We could do that as well, right? But then we would lose, we would lose the state's money, right? Because they're kicking in money to pay, so that's, so we could actually win in that sense.
Some, yeah, there's a chance, right?
Yeah. I mean, I'm not talking about the difference between what they would pay, anything they would kick in, even 40% would be a pure win.
Over time, yeah.
Even, even if they paid once, it would be a pure win.
As opposed to just abating...
For the community as a whole.
Take money to the community, to people's pockets, and then the school burden.
Right, but I agree, there's a trade-off there, in terms of like, you know, it's always good to have the reserves, right? You don't want to be without the reserves, so...
Right, and we're, we're spending a bit of money down the road.
Right, I agree.
We've got like a lot of projects going on.
I agree. So it sounds like we should revisit this in a couple weeks, talk about it more.
Okay.
And then, last item you had on here was the, so, that was the Civilizer Committee, so I don't know. Thanks, Mr. Pitten.
And Linda, if you want to take, we had two meetings over, in the month of November.
Yep, we had a meeting on the 13th and a meeting on the 27th, and while we were hoping we would be able to be ready for a presentation at this meeting, we're not quite there, and hoping for next one. Yep, we, the 95% of the time we've spent this month is all about the AIMS project, so we've really been going through that and feel like getting to a better set of solutions to present. We're meeting again in, next week, so...
Yeah, so I really appreciate the engagement of the committee, and, you know, it's been, we're looking for integrated design solutions that really have this district-wide impact, and I think we're getting closer and closer to that. But ongoing conversations before we are bringing it forward to the full board and the community.
And so part of what we're thinking about is early learners as well, correct?
Mm-hmm. I mean, the best, best home for them, best way just to reduce overcrowding in general, the most efficient ways, really, I think, is really the way we stated the goal, is what are those efficient design solutions that help us with crowding and just, yeah, the appropriate, you know, placement of programs across the district.
Thanks for, yeah, thanks for having all those meetings, and I'm glad to hear that things are moving along.
Yep.
Are there any other questions on the Finance Committee? Okay, then, if not, is there, we're going to go back, we didn't finish our closed session conversation, so is there one to enter into closed session, purposes discussing the purchase or lease of real property for use in the district, including meetings over the focus of discussing whether a particular parcel should be a part.
Someone?
Margie, please, roll.
Mr. Potter?
Aye.
Ms. Fieber?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie, thanks, everyone.